I'd like to call this meeting to order, first order of business, collect the lead.
Collect the lead in the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, who lives in justice.
Robert's Rules of Orders will be enforced tonight, and if anybody in the audience would care to speak, we want them to come to the table, identify themselves, and then use the microphone. So the first order of business tonight is to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? So carried. Next motion, uh, next order of business is the minutes, everybody have a chance to read the minutes of September seventeenth, council meeting. I recommend approval. We have a recommendation, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? So carried, uh, claims list to recommend approving the claims list for September twenty twenty-four.
I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second. We have a motion, a recommendation, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, uh, to recommend accepting accounts, balances, and disbursements ledgers for various funds from September thirtieth. You gonna recommend?
I'll recommend, I'll recommend accepting.
We have a recommendation and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Uh, to recommend approving resolution twenty twenty-four, approving the proposed twenty twenty-four tax levy collectible twenty twenty-five.
Is that still in the, we're not raising, that's just what, twenty thousand more than last year?
Well, what I did was I kept it at the same tax rate.
Right, right.
I mean, there's some wiggle room whenever we start looking at the budget.
Right.
So I, we can obviously lower that, but if you look at that spreadsheet, I kept it at the same tax rate.
Alright, alright.
And then also, um, I put on there, the one that I just set on your desk is, um, the, um, to have the, to have the final budget meeting and letting discussion at six o'clock before our regular meeting on December seventeenth.
Okay, I can do this.
Instead of doing the different day, just come a little bit early that they can.
I'll make that recommendation for approving the proposed twenty twenty, it's gonna be the twenty twenty-five, or proposed twenty twenty-four levy to be collected in twenty twenty-five. I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second that.
Have a recommendation, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. With the information for the public here, audience here, that our levy is two hundred and ninety thousand. Uh, moving on. To distribute to twenty twenty-five general fund budget review, and set the date for the special making review, the draft budget. Okay, so the budget, so let's go to work for everybody.
So, I, that's just, that's the draft that we need to have a special made to discuss.
Right, we set a date for it, what?
So, um, Todd's usually pretty good about pulling out the calendar and seeing when he's here or not here. I think we did it before Thanksgiving last year?
Yeah.
November or something?
Well, the, yeah, let's see. Deer season starts on the night, we do elections on the fifth.
Right.
Maybe do it Wednesday the sixth, does that work for people, or?
Um.
Works for me.
What do you mean Wednesday?
It works for me.
Yeah, it's fine with me, November, November sixth.
Yeah.
That's a Wednesday.
Yeah. At like five thirty or what?
She's making sure the time is.
Yeah, yeah, just a preliminary budget meeting, just to draft it.
Are we switching our regular meeting to the sixth then, too?
We have to.
Because voting, election day is a.
Right, we're gonna move the, we'll move the.
Meeting will be on Monday.
Meeting.
On November sixth?
Yeah.
And what are we gonna do about our meeting?
With the election, are we gonna move that to the sixth also?
No, that's the first, that's the first Tuesday, not the second, we're fine.
Okay, okay, okay.
All right, November sixth works then?
Yeah, yep.
Five thirty, November sixth.
What, uh, do you guys wanna do it a little bit earlier, five o'clock, or something like that?
Five o'clock works.
That's, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, uh, let's see where we're. Oh, uh, to approve the resolution twenty twenty-four dash seven, delegating cannabis business registration and enforcement authority to Coochin County.
Um, we kinda talked about that a little bit, the regulations, I sent those out to everyone last month, started working on ordinance, but, um, I talked with the county administrator, Adam, and he was thinking that most of the small cities would do this, so that sheriff's department would have, you know, the same, um.
Authority.
Authority in each city without having different things to have to worry about, and, um, I'm sure my fathers will do something different because they have their own police department, but, um, this is something a lot of small cities are doing in Minnesota, if that's something everybody fixes.
I think that, that makes a lot of sense.
What's, what's gonna, every person, every business that can sell any kind of cannabis, or even the edibles and drinks, are gonna have to register through the Office of Cannabis Management, and there has to be enforcement and, um, checkups and all sorts of things for the businesses.
Will that give us any authority to, uh, deny them?
Can't deny them.
Okay.
Can't deny?
The only thing, we, we, what I'm working on is with zoning regulations, so there are certain things that you can say that can't be within the next amount of.
Well, it should be like a bit, I can see it being like a liquor license too, if they have to meet requirements.
Well, we need.
I mean, we, we vote on every liquor license, tip tobacco, certainly cannabis should be in that category where we could approve a license or not.
Boy, I'm sure that the county would come to us, see if we wanted it.
Okay.
Uh, it might be a little bit more complicated than that.
What's that?
It's a little bit more complicated than that, but, um.
Well, I, I'm sure it is, but like I'm saying, the city should have some say in this deal if, if, if we do or don't want it, and who's proposing what to, you know, I'm, just like a liquor license, depend on, you know, we don't have vendors setting on the street here, selling liquor on the streets, and stuff like that.
There's, there's lots of regulations that are in place with the state about it, but I can, let me do a, um, just a little G C for next week to, to let you know a little bit.
Well, yeah, obviously it's new, there's gonna be some hiccups in this, and, you know, and what'll happen is somebody will push the envelope somewhere, and there'll be some adjustments, and so it's fine having the county take the lead on this, I'm all for that, but hopefully we can, um, you know, have some, have some kind of input onto this or stay in.
I think it's a step in the right direction anyway, to get hooked up with the county.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, I agree with that a hundred percent, so, okay.
I'll make that recommendation.
Quick question, just regarding that committee, it's, I need to ask, but, um, giving the enforcement authority to Cooch County.
Can you speak into the mic, Jen?
Um, be, like, voting to give the enforcement authority over to Cooch County, um, in terms of draft, how does that work if we draft ordinance as a city, do those things work together then?
The things that would be in our ordinance would have a lot more to do with zoning than, um, than enforcement authority.
Okay.
But, you know, like I said, we can continue to, to research it all, you know, because there's more things coming out every week that are still being developed.
Okay.
But yes.
So do we need to hold off on the resolution?
Well, you could, well, you could make a recommendation, and then I'll bring some other information to you to the next meeting.
So we could add to the.
Yeah. See if you can understand it a little bit better.
I think Todd made a.
I'll make that recommendation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a recommendation, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
What was the recommendation to do?
What's that?
Well, well, what's the, what are you moving on?
That's cannabis.
To let the county handle the cannabis rules and regulations, basically. I mean, obviously, we, okay, um. Next to accept the four thousand dollar donation from Rainier Rec Club.
I'll make that recommendation.
We have a recommendation, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? So carried. Again, thank you for that, I don't know how they keep doing it, but they do. Recommend to approve resolution twenty twenty-four oh nine, general, general election judges.
I'll make that recommendation.
You have the list of everybody?
Yeah.
Any?
Did you wanna say who they were, or not?
I don't think we have to, if everybody's got a copy of them, I, I read the names, I, I don't see the issue with this. Do we get a recommendation to approve the judges?
Yes, I recommend, oh, yeah, I recommend.
We have a recommendation and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Um, municipal liquor, Jen? What are you going for next year, or I mean, next month, Jen?
Uh, not a whole lot, other than it'll be shack season and everyone will be gone, but.
Deer hunting?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do the big buck contest, and, uh, soon as that's, you know, as soon as deer season's done, we'll do a privilege tournament and get back into the swings and things again, but, for now, she's gonna be slow and there's not much we can do.
November's always.
Oh, yeah, no Halloween party, sorry. At the end of the month, but, no point in spending money at the.
No, November's always a bad month.
Yeah.
Any questions, Todd? Wilbur, Jen? Hmm, no.
Oh, is everything, all the equipment running okay over there and everything?
So far, so good, we had the electric guy over, he upgraded us, we're running smoothly again, not, you know, tripping breakers and all that, so. He's gonna come back and, and fix the outlets, so that we can get the dishwasher put in finally, so.
Nothing for Halloween?
For Halloween, we're gonna have a big day in a, in a costume party.
Yeah, that's, okay. Any questions for Jen? Get a recommendation to accept?
I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second that.
Have a recommendation and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Nick?
What's going on, everybody? We're here. We got all our, all that playground equipment from Kootaskia brought over, back at storage, it's all staged back there. We'll have to pick a day next spring when we can order the holes and get it set up, put back together.
Thanks.
We got probably halfway through putting all the new signed caps on, and redoing all the signs again that we just did.
It's getting that season, you start paying attention to your hydrants and stuff, another month or so, we probably wanna make sure that they either drained or pumped, or whatever we have to do.
Yeah, we, we like having them done before the end of deer season.
Question with that, have we, I know we allotted some money for GPSing, are all the water valves and manholes been GPSed and mapped?
Gate, gatebells, and curb stops, and our sewer, which runs from the park.
Yeah.
We don't have really that much sewer that's ours, but all of our stuff is GPS.
So we, we can find the location of them, so.
Yeah.
If we need, so, okay. Um, the only thing I know of, there's gonna be that water connection on, uh, you know, whether it be at the end of this week or the start of next week, so.
We went down today and found all our bells, and I got one.
Yeah, double check and make sure they shut off, turn on, if they're operable, that's all.
I got one, and we gotta have, uh, Rick Beckfire come out and suck out for us.
And then prior to that shutdown, just notify, we'll probably have you notify everybody that will be affected, I'm not, how, how many people will be affected by that?
If we can get on that one bell, that Rick's gonna come out and get all the clay and stuff off the bottom of it, if we can get on that one, it's only gonna affect like nine people.
Nine, nine, nine all sorts of businesses.
A couple of them were, were seasonal people, it would be our real, so.
You say you get one valve that's full of mud or something?
Yeah, and after, after that construction, we have a county project there, it seemed like the top of that gatebell kinda got nugged over, so the, it's tough to get a wrench on it sometimes. It works good now, but winter time, it doesn't work very good, and it's up against the side body.
Yeah.
So we got a thinner wrench now, we're gonna, Rick's gonna come out and flush it out, we're gonna try it. And if we can't, if we can't get on that one, we got two other valves we're gonna shut out, but it's only eighteen people or something.
Well, that's all I'm saying, make sure all the valves are operable, that you can get a key on them.
Yep.
Alright, uh, anything for Nick?
We got a tree to cut down over at the park.
In the park?
Yep, right at the end of my driveway, that tree that's in the park, split right in half.
Yeah.
The other day when the wind was blowing.
We've had quite a few of them in the last week.
Speaking of trees in the park, um, we have, if you've noticed, uh, there are some pink and white, pink flags and.
White stakes.
Uh, white stakes, um, those are marking the future areas of where shoulders are gonna come in, and plant those trees that came with the Emerald Ash Corner grant, and so I'm not sure what day Dwayne's coming, but he had to know what, where all those spots were, because he had to call, because he's gonna dig. So I'm not sure what day that is, he kinda just shows up some days, and I just made sure the spots were there, and he saw them, and so that's supposed to happen, I'm, I wouldn't be surprised if he didn't show up, I mean, have you heard anything from him? That he would show up, so just, you'd see him in there working, basically, so.
Okay.
Are they gonna cut any more trees out of the park?
No, no, the ones that we took care of, because there's probably two that could go, are not ash, so they, we couldn't, we could cut it down as a city, but in terms of like the ground, we could already cut down ash trees, so.
Yeah.
Just that.
In the future, we're gonna have to start thinking of what the ones, I don't know if they're, because it's a county road and county right away, on the edge of the, um, where Craig McKenzie lot there?
Yep.
Got those willows right there.
Yep.
I, we had a big one come down the other day.
They saw that one.
There's, there's three or four of them that are split halfway up, and ain't gonna take much more, and they're all gonna be laying down. And I don't know if that's something to do with that's on his property, if that's on counties or cities, or whose it is, but we should think, well, maybe clean it up and get a few of them taken care of if we can.
I, I.
Before they come down the road.
You have a heavy snowfall and.
Right, that's all, okay.
Definitely turned up at least a little, it's not for someone who cleaned up at some point, like.
You had to pick a couple of the big, the big branches off, and, well, just looking to see what they are, and I don't wanna go off them out and end up not being out of the zone.
I'll, I'll check with McKenzie on them willows there, if he has any issue, if they have to be taken down or not. I see him once a week, so.
Yeah, we can take them back to storage or whatever, and.
Yeah, well, if they're on county property, obviously they have to.
I can touch base with them, they'd help too, so.
Well, I'll check and see, I'll, I'll talk to him, I think this week yet, so I'll see if he has any issues with it, and if they are county, then we should check with them anyway, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're in tough shape, but look at them, so, okay, anything else for Nick?
No.
No?
Okay, thanks, guys.
Dave, Izzy?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, the next thing is an update on, uh, land side, uh, construction schedule, uh, actually struck, um, if the change order is approved, uh, tonight, uh, construction will start again tomorrow morning, and, um, we have met with Minnesota Power also, that they have to bring the main power in, and they're gonna come down the alleyway just past, um, uh, Looney's there, about a, about a hundred feet down the alleyway, and, um, they're gonna run the power in from there to the transformer, and, uh, we met with them last Friday afternoon, and, uh, they showed us where they wanted it, and so they contracted to, uh, jackhammer it out and dig the trench form, they gotta put a two foot deep trench, uh, from the transformer to about a hundred feet, going east down the alleyway. Uh, as far as the sewer, the sewer's been installed and dead-ended, of course, uh, the water main, uh, the water service for the dock has been installed, and, um, according to the plan, it has not been connected to the existing main, because there was no existing main, and so, um, that's what the change order was about, and basically all the, uh, the electrical trenches have been dug, I don't know if, um, uh, Kennedy is the subcontractor for the electrical to run it down to the dock, and then he's gotta put, I believe, eight conduits in that electrical trench that's been dug for him, once he does that, we can backfill it, now, I'll, I'll go tomorrow, I guess, if they're working tomorrow, that, that'll be something that'll be addressed right away. Uh, other than that, uh, the gravel and everything has been removed and stuff, the blacktop's been removed, the gravel's been removed, uh, new gravel's been installed from the dock, as far as the, um, manhole, uh, actually, every night, uh, the barricades have been removed and moved down to basically the alleyway to open up for Looney's, so Looney's had access to his. Pardon me?
People still have access to.
Yeah, they, they, and then, um, I was authorized to offer them the parking lot too, they can, obviously, parking can leave his parking lot, but they also, the street's been open for him every night, and no work has, uh, been past five o'clock, so.
Three o'clock.
So, uh, we don't intend to work past anything past five, so whatever evening business he has during the day, uh, barricades been moved during the day, they've been, what's that?
It's three o'clock, not five o'clock, nothing after three o'clock.
The hammer, the hammer.
Hammering.
Who said that?
That's what was, that's what's on here.
That's what's on here, too.
Yeah.
They, they can still work down there, but the jack, the, the loud noise will be done by three.
By three o'clock.
Well, that's fine, the hammering is always done by three o'clock, the, 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 you know, what they do is jackhammer till, like you say, three o'clock, but then they have to dig out, which is all part of the same deal, but there will be no hammering, and then they excavate the trench and backfill, remove the rock, and then backfill the, um, trench with, uh, sand, so that he, he has access, um, by contract, they don't have to do it, but they are, we are backfilling it, so that he has access, so, trying to make at least the inconvenience for him as we can, so. Other than that.
And we have confirmation that the change order.
Pardon me, Jen?
I was just saying, we have confirmation that the construction change order, the increased cost is gonna be covered by addition, the additional OCC market, that we have.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, there's, yeah, the funding's available, Jer, Jeremy and I went through all of this today, and, um.
And we're good on that, right?
Can you say that again? I mean, I'm sorry, I can't. You're very wrong, the change order.
The construction change order, the additional cost, is, is not any additional cost to the city, it is included in the grant, I mean, we've already opened, through the OCC, yeah.
Today, uh, did you have a change order legal?
Well, obviously, the water main wasn't there, so it has to be installed, and steering committee looked at it, so that's, that's an item, that's our next item, I guess, um, I'll abstain from that being that I'm a contractor, affiliated with a contractor, but I think you've all seen the change order, so it needs recommending approving before any work can be done, obviously.
How much is that?
Hundred and seven thousand. But that does include, the change order includes new services, uh, stub down, stub out down the main, uh, down the alleyway, if we ever loop the line, there'll be a line going down that, uh, jackhammering of all the rock, uh, I'm just hitting some of the points, jackhammering all the rock, putting the pipe in, connecting to the existing manhole or the existing water main, and rehooking the three services, and, uh, insulating everything, it was all spelled out.
And the, the reason for the change order is because there wasn't a water main there in the first place, and what's there won't, won't, um, supply to the dock and.
Oh, well, yeah, and, and all, it'll have more pressure than ever if we ever loop the line going down the alleyway to a lagoon or something like that, that, that'll all be possible now, uh, on a good note, um, Minnesota Power, um, had a price of doing that, but because we can come down that alleyway, uh, from the price they originally quoted, the city should save somewhere between seventy and fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars, it, uh, they, they haven't installed the line yet, so they can't quite give us the price, but it was a huge savings, I mean, uh, by coming down the alleyway, so, that's a good thing. Pardon me?
I'll make that recommendation.
Do we have a recommendation for the, uh, change order for the land side construction project?
I'll make that recommendation.
We have a recommendation, you have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Uh, to recommend approving resolution twenty twenty-four oh eight, addressing delinquent utility accounts to properties.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a recommendation, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay, well, that concludes the, tonight's meeting, uh, it opens us to any other business, um, I got one thing I wanna bring in first, I, I made that offer about the fireworks display, maybe if we're having our budget meeting, we can look at how the budget looks for next year, and, uh, we'll consider that at the, at the budget, you know, if there's some money for it, and we decide we wanna do it, that'd be the, we have to budget it in, so, that'd be fine. Nick, you, you had something?
I got a hydraulic block on the front of that skid steer.
Pardon, pardon me?
I got a hydraulic block on the front of that skid steer, that, a fitting on it.
Yeah.
Cracked the fitting, I don't know if the log got in there, but it's leaking hydraulic fluid and iron height, and it's like a pile to ship it up here, is anybody going to Bemidji?
Going to Bemidji?
Yeah. Anybody?
With Saturday? In the next week or two weeks, or what?
Like this week or this weekend?
Saturday.
Saturday, if I call and get it, could you pick it up?
Mm-hmm, I'm gonna be leaving here, though, it's probably right on that.
Do you know where they're located?
No, but I can get them.
I'll get it to you, I'll give you their address and everything?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
As a bait.
And if that, if that falls, if that falls through, TJ's going next to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're really need to find them, they're right on the main now.
I'll get ahold of you, thank you.
Um, anything else from the audience? Go ahead, John. Go ahead, John, speaking to the mic. Thank you, it's all.
So, um, it has to do with the Robert Rules of Order, or what?
Yeah.
So we have this thing where, uh, the public can have their time, their three minutes at the end of the meeting, after all the business is done, basically, so, I'm not, I'm not blaming them, or do you think you've got a bad look on their face?
No, I'm just trying to hear, that's all.
What, do you think it would work better if, um, a person that had something to bring to the council could come in in the office, get the, uh, uh, get cleared up in there, what, you know, you would like to bring up to the council?
Yeah, we can put anything on the agenda too, if you've got something you wanna discuss, we can put it on the agenda, but.
That's exactly the question I'm asking, wouldn't that be better than have to hand, because it's all done, with the bait and won't bleed, like the.
No, I, I think that's a good idea.
That's good.
Yeah, if you wanna put something on the agenda, that's always open, that, it's always has been, this, you know, just what we've got an open forum right now, in case you think of something, that never have time to put on the agenda, so, that's what we do, so if you want, if you want something, just raise your share of.
Another thing too, is, um, I mean, I know it's here a little bit hard to hear, I, I'm real hard to hear.
Yeah.
And is there any way of having somebody come in and, and, and try to do a little something, make the.
Acoustics.
Other people have, um, complained about it too, they say it's ceilings or something, it's.
I don't know.
I don't know if we could hook up to it, ear, ear pods?
I, you know, it might be electrical deal that, but I, I, and I don't know, when it comes to electronics, we, we may be able to talk into something, and it shows up on, uh, on an iPad or something, I, you know, when we talk in like a phone, sometimes you can, it'll all be recorded, I, I, I am totally literate when it comes to that stuff, but, Gercy, you got any idea on that? If somebody were, were to talk in, if, you know, for the council or myself? Well, how about that? That might be better.
Well, there you are.
Okay. I think the microphones are.
Bring a couple extra sets.
And we need to just utilize the microphone more, can you hear me better when I speak into the microphone?
No, no, I think, but Cheryl, no, I, I think Cheryl is the most important one to hear, and, uh, she, I can't really.
She can borrow mine then.
We'll just turn it, we'll just turn it when she, when she needs to talk, we'll turn the mic there.
Okay. Anything else?
What you do here?
That is, recommendation, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.